This meeting of the Corvail City Council to order February thirteenth, 2024. Roll call, please. Knutson.
Here.
Vogel Zhang.
Here.
Huen.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
All council members are present, as is City Clerk Johnson, City Administrator Hayworth, Deputy City Administrator Hubble, City Attorney Olson, along with city staff in the audience. And I'm sitting in as Mayor Pro Tem while Mayor Foster attends a special family event. I'm Lori Goodrich. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Huen, seconded by Knutson. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. I have the honor to proclaim this as Black History Month, and I will read the proclamation. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Black Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the City of Corvail continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas the City of Corvail is proud to honor the history and contributions of Black Americans in our communities' 150-year history, as well as through our state and nation. And now therefore, in recognition of Black Americans, past and present, in our community, I, Lori Goodrich, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Corvail, do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month. And encourage all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture, and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous. Signed this thirteenth day of February 2024, Lori Goodrich, Mayor Pro Tem. Do we have someone here to receive this? If not, we'll ask Thor to display it here in City Hall. Thank you. This is a time for community comments. Is there anyone who would like to speak to us about items that are not on the agenda or on the agenda but do not have a public hearing? Okay, tonight, we'll be moving ahead with sanitary sewer work that's been going on and that has been on our capital improvement project list. Item number six on our agenda is Kemp Lift Station abandonment. And I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak during this public hearing? Any written?
No written.
Okay, there. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll hear now from Scott Larson, our city engineer.
Yes, thank you. I'll just give a brief summary of this project. The Kemp Lift Station was put in with the Kemp subdivision because at the time, there was no gravity sanitary sewer anywhere near that subdivision. So the developer put in the lift station, and that force main actually runs through the north and west sides of the U Sports Park before it reaches gravity sanitary sewer. So thanks to a 208e agreement that we have with the City of North Liberty to swap sanitary sewer drainage areas, we're able to abandon this lift station and connect via gravity sanitary sewer directly to North Liberty's wastewater system.
Thank you. Let's consider the resolution, and then we can have some questions or discussion.
Resolution approving the plan, specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract, ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of said bids, and directing posting of the bid letting, all for the Kemp Lift Station abandonment. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Huen. Any questions or discussion about this?
You said estimate of cost. I don't see that in there.
It's $350,000.
$350,000?
Yeah.
Just to abandon it, or is that included?
That's the gravity sewer as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, I can add too that all of the equipment related to the lift station goes away. So there's a couple of happy property owners.
I bet.
Okay, roll call, please. Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
All ayes, and resolution is approved. Seven, West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase Two. And this is a public hearing. Phase Two will extend the land use central trunk sewer system to the north and east where the Phase One ends. And bids are due March 5th. And I'll open the public hearing now. Is there anyone who'd like to speak with us? Any written? Okay.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
I'm Dwayne Miller. I lived 31 years in Corvail, and then I had the acreage where the Unitarians have built. And since have moved into North Liberty, and I'm in the Fox Valley Development near where the lift station will be. And it's been nice to hike out in that area, where I understand you're planning a park and so on. And I just came to, I was hoping to see maps and a few things, but I have received a diagram of where the sewer line will go. And I was just curious and came here. And other than that, just want to let you know why I'm here.
Good. Great to have you here, Dwayne. Thank you. And I saw you talking with Scott Larson, and I'm sure he'll fill you in even more. Thank you. Thank you. I will close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the plan, specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract, ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of said bids, and directing posting of the bid letting, all for the West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase Two project. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions? Roll call, please. Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
All ayes. This has been, this resolution is approved. Number eight, 12th Avenue Urban Renewal Plan, public hearing. This puts Fifth Street project in our 12th urban renewal plan. The consultation report, please.
Yes, as we set the consultation at the council last time, we, the consultation was scheduled for 2:00 on February 5th. Notice was sent to the Iowa City Community School District and Johnson County, and we did not receive any questions, and nobody attended the consultation.
Okay. I'll now open the public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak to us about this? Any written?
No written.
Thank you, Thor. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and please consider the resolution.
Resolution approving amendment number 11 to the 12th Avenue Urban Renewal Plan and 12th Avenue Urban Renewal Area. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Huen. Discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Is this just the street, basically?
Excuse me.
Yes, all we did was add street right of way. But you have to add the street right of way, and they have to have the project in there. It's just, there's not going to be any tiff collected on this at all.
That's what I assume. Okay.
Roll call, please. Goodrich.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
All ayes, resolution approved. We will go to number nine, Oakdale Boulevard Force Main Project. This includes resolutions regarding environmental information, acquisition, and easements, and construction. A, we'll consider the resolution.
Resolution setting a public hearing and an environmental information document, and directly published notice of the same, both for the Oakdale Boulevard Force Main Project. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Huen, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Roll call, please. Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
All ayes, resolution passes. B is next resolution authorizing acquisition of property.
Resolution intent authorizing the acquisition of property interests for the Oakdale Boulevard Force Main Project. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Roll call, please. Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
All ayes, resolution passes. C is consider resolution setting a public hearing date.
Resolution setting a public hearing date for the plan, specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract for the Oakdale Boulevard Force Main Project. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by, discussion? Okay, roll call. Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
All ayes, resolution passes. Next, we have the turf and horticulture contracts. We have Sherri Proud here to give the, she's our Parks and Recreation Director, to give the bid report.
Yes. Sorry about that. All right. Bids were taken just a few weeks ago on our hurt tort, yeah, turf and hort services. I mess that up every time. For the years of 2024 and 2025, those will run from March through November. And the city staff will take care of garbage and trash cans in these areas from December through February for those two years. We did receive bidders, five bids. One would not do any of the mowing services, so they were not considered at all in this bidding process. And our park superintendent's recommendation is to split this across two of our bidders, Greg's Lawn and Quality Care. Quality Care would do Highway Six and the Iowa River Landing non-cam area, and Greg's would take Coral Ridge Avenue. So we'd like to award those two for two years. And we're both familiar with, we're familiar with both these companies. Both have held this contract in the past and are aware of how much is out there to do and how to do it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Let's consider the resolution.
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the 2024-2025 turf and horticulture contracts. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Let's see, I guess, any questions? Okay, roll call, please. Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All ayes, resolution passes. Next, we have the mass transit bus cleaning service, and Vicki is here, our transit director, is here to talk to us about a two-year contract.
Yes, we put out an invitation to quote for a two-year contract, and then the option for three additional, no, single year. And so they quoted for the five years. The award would be for two, and there was a wide range in bids, and we would recommend Mary's Cleaning LLC for $48,600 for the two years.
Any questions?
Is that less than we've been paying in the past?
It's, it's well within our budget what we've been, what we've been paying. Slight increase.
I just saw that difference there. That's.
It's sizable, yes.
Yeah.
Consider the resolution, please.
Resolution accepting quotation and awarding contract for mass transit bus cleaning services. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Huen. I guess we've had our discussion. Is there, roll call, please. Goodrich.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
All ayes, resolution passes. Number 12, Option Agreement Amendment. This extends the option for building a project in the Iowa River Landing north of the UIHC parking lot. Consider the resolution.
Resolution approving amendment number one to that certain option agreement with TM Development LLC. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Huen, seconded by.
Second.
Is that you?
Yeah.
Mike Knutson, seconded by Knutson. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, this is the, this, like I said, there's a vacant lot there north of there, and obviously if, if the project goes forward, it'll be, it'll be constructed after the road improvements are done. So it'll be, the new entrance will go right into there, so.
Yeah, we've talked a little bit about this. Kind of an exciting project. I'm a little disappointed Von Maurer has not approved it yet. How much time do they have?
Oh, they're, I mean, Kelly's been working with Mr. Larson's been, he's been, he's been gone a lot lately, so I, we have no reason to believe they're not going to approve it. We're just need to get through the paperwork process.
And what happens if they don't approve it?
Well.
We would have a 60-foot limit.
Yep.
What's that?
We'd have a 60-foot limit. Their only approval right is on the height.
Yep.
Not on the project itself. Yes.
So it's over 60 feet, so.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay.
How high is it, do we think?
Well, that's one of the things they want to go through as part of this option. If, they didn't want to go to the next step unless they got approval from Von Maur, because they didn't want to spend the money on the design. So that's what they, why they need the extension, because we haven't been able to get that.
So this is kind of protecting their view of their store.
Yeah, except the developer, proposed developer did provide a view shed of the, of the Von Maur store, and it wouldn't block it. I mean, if you imagine 60 feet.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it would.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay. We ready for a roll call? Please. Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
All ayes, resolution passes. Thirteen is a lease agreement, leasing space to place dirt for the Clear Creek Project. Resolution, please.
Resolution approving a lease agreement with JMT Holdings LLC for property to store excess dirt from the Stream Bank mitigation project. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Huen. Any questions or conversation about this? Okay, roll call, please. Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
All ayes, resolution passes. The next is board and commission appointments. We need a motion to concur with the recommendations of Mayor Megan Foster to the following appointment. Corvail Citizens Community Policing Advisory Board, reappoint Guillermo Morales from Lulac, who lives in Iowa City. Appoint Rob Rogers, who lives on 7th Street. Appoint Ashley Salinas, who is on 5th Street. And Scott Putney, who lives on Harvest Circle. And the first three, their nomination goes until 2026, and for Scott Putney, it's until 2025. Appointment is the word I should have used. The Planning and Zoning Commission appoints Aaron Maniza, Maniza, and he lives on Poplar Street, and his appointment is until 2027. All the terms will end December 31st of that year that was mentioned. We need a motion, please.
So moved.
Moved by Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Huen.
Voice vote's fine.
We need a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Consider a motion to approve consent calendar as presented or amended.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to ask council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to U.
Anyone like to second that?
Seconded by Knutson. All in. We need a roll call.
We need a roll call. Yep. Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Okay, it passes. All ayes. City administrators report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just wanted to let everyone know that last week, we were able to start the planning process for the reimagining of Corvail Rec Center and Aquatic Facility. We had over 40 people that were different stakeholders come together to do that planning process, and we've also started the survey, community survey. And so encourage people to go and return that survey. The links are on the website.
Under Parks and Rec.
There's also various places that we have locations advertising that as well. So just encourage people, they have till the end of February to get that out, and this is our chance for everybody to get input. And then coming in April, they will be giving feedback, and then there'll be a time at council also for public viewing of the results of all of that. So just encourage people to please participate.
Great. Thank you. I have a couple things I'd like to welcome. Ann Hester, Director of Finance, is in our audience, and we're happy to have you join the City of Corvail, and welcome. The President's Day holiday schedule for city departments, the city offices will be closed. That includes here at City Hall, the library, the rec center, and indoor pool will be open with their regular times. And Corvail Transit will keep their normal routes and schedule. Trash and recycling, as you may always remember, when we have a day off on President's Day, then everything's backed up one day. So Monday's route will be picked up on Tuesday, Tuesdays on Wednesday, and so on. Same, the recycling center will also be closed on Monday. I'd like to speak my sympathies to the family of Corvail resident Fred Feebold, who passed away this, last week. Fred served as a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee for over 22 years, and he was an active chair for the commission for many years. He was great to work with, and he will be greatly missed. There's one more thing. We can apply for a grant to help necessary home upgrades or repairs. Qualifying homeowners can apply for a grant for givable loan for approximately $1,500 to make necessary home repairs or upgrades through the Johnson County Housing Rehabilitation Program. That's what I have. The city attorney's report?
Just one thing, that's $15,000.
Yes. I said it wrong. $15,000's even better.
So we do encourage people, anybody that knows of people that could use these services, this is a great opportunity to get a grant for those that work.
Thank you.
I have nothing, ma'am.
Committee and council members report. Start with you, Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I attended my first MPO JC meeting, and I'm going to be taking some training on that next Tuesday. So I really appreciate that. That, that is something that falls right into my wheelhouse, so I really enjoyed that. And yeah, I mean, that's about all I have, really, tonight, so, thank you.
Great. Hi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I have the privilege and opportunity to attend the War He Chap Day that does Corvail Public Library partner with a organization, which is Miriam Girl Clubs, to bring awareness and celebrate being individual, no matter, you know, what, what religion or affiliation that you have. And it was well attended. This is their second year of the partnership, and I'm really glad to see that it's gaining traction. There was people from all walks of life that came out of curiosity, that came because they wanted to learn more about, you know, just a piece of cloth that being used differently, and really learn more about the perspective of Muslim women, because oftentimes, it is being viewed as it's oppressive, because they have to wear that because someone else tell them to wear that. But the opposite is true. It is a choice for Muslim women. So I myself was able to learn a lot from that. So thank you to the Miriam Girl Club and the Corvail Public Library for that partnership to bring more awareness. And then they had a book sale on that same day. It was crazy, that same weekend, and it was the busiest and the most successful book sale that the Friends have ever conducted. They changed things a little bit. They opened up on Thursday night just to invite a friend of the Friend to come and shop with them, and that worked out really well. And I was able to come on Sunday, and most of the shelf was bare, which is a good sign. So thank you to all the volunteer who put in the effort and the, and the time to do that. I was able to talk to a couple of staff, like city staff member, who are working the recycling site. And I would just like to remind our general public that if you do use the recycling site, please, please break down your boxes. And if your box are big, please break them down and put the dump in there, because it is so hard for our staff to be working, you know, trying to keep the city clean, especially during the week when we have trash and recycling day. They are out picking up those, and then they come back to the site, and they see a whole mess on the floor because someone didn't take the time to break down the box and just try to stuff it in there. This is not just for one person, this is for our entire community. So just please take some time and make it nice and neat for everyone. It would really benefit our staff so that they have time to be able to keep our city The meal is coming up, so please keep an eye out for signup. It's going to be a global meal. So if you like to cook, and if you have something that you would like to share with our community, please reach out to, to me, or go on to the Corvail website, the Corvail Food Pantry website, and find some more information about that. And then City Circle just have their play this last weekend, Sonheim, in Sonheim, and it was wildly successful. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend, but there's another play coming up early March is The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe from Young Footlighter. So if you have kids, and if your kid liked that series, I would encourage you to start getting ticket now. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich, welcome in.
You've already mentioned, I was going to mention about the grant opportunities, but that's already been covered, so thank you. Also want to welcome in, I think you've got a big job ahead of you, but there's just a few numbers floating around this city, right? So, and also my hats off to Sherri in the, with the visioning session for the Parks and Rec, for the Rec Center was, I was, I was very impressed with, with how that went off and the ideas that were shared. So it's another big project ahead of us, it's an exciting project, so, for the whole, for the whole community, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, sorry. It's getting.
You know, I almost said Mitch. Isn't that something? Mike Knutson.
I, I really don't have anything. I just, just learned about Fred, and we'll reiterate.
Yeah.
That's a big loss. He was also happened to be a pretty frequent blood donor for us at the blood bank, and a regular there as well, and had no idea he was even ill. So sorry to hear that. sorry to hear that. That's all I have.
You were on Parks and Rec together.
Yeah, I worked with.
We have one coming up here in these council centers on March 6th, I believe.
Okay.
With us?
With you. Yes, with you. At least that's who I have my appointment with.
Anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn, please.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.